Fair.
Yeah.
Who says no?
I don't know what you mean.
Because they like.
For recording purposes, maybe the conference guys.
So every time I'm good, I said we get to be there.
There are.
That one who needs to and I don't, I don't mind it.
And then I wish one later.
And I go to the town and enjoy the next day.
Yeah, just enjoy it if you're partying.
Really?
I think we'll go ahead and get started. We're going to start off, we'll have the commission number roll call.
John Larson.
Here.
Teresa Keller.
Here.
Joe Martin emailed me and she'll be here in a second. Lynn Christensen.
Yeah.
Nick Jamison.
Here.
Alan Hughes.
Here.
Ree Fry.
Here.
Let the record also show that Richard Crouch, Carol Benton and Lonnie Mayberry are also present.
Okay, so we'll go through if everybody has been able to take a peek at the current agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Do we have a motion by Hughes? Do we have a second? A second. Second, Morrison. Hey, we'll go through if you had a chance to read through the minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody has, so do we have a motion to approve? Some time. Nick. Got a motion to approve the previous meeting. Motion now.
Yep.
You got, okay, we got a motion by Hughes, you got a second?
I'll second.
Second, right. Do end the continuation from January second and March twelfth meetings. Public hearings and now we'll go into review of revised draft for future land use plan.
Thank you, everyone. So we had our input. Sent it to Confluence and they sent back to us now our April draft version of our future land use plan and I listed out kind of in the staff report for you the some of the key updates that I wanted to make sure that we hit on for the commission because of some of the public comment that we had on on this. And that was on, the first part of it was on the map for the future land use. But during some of the public comment that we had, there was a lot to do with our two mile areas around each of the communities and originally, if you remember the draft version from last time, we just had this urban fringe area around some of the towns. And to delineate it out a little bit better and help as it could be residents or new developers come in, look at the area and they pull up the future land use map. So that way they have a good understanding of this black line area represents each of those small communities, two mile ETJ area. County, as best we do to try to work with each of our small communities. They really have the layout of what's going to be in their two mile area and the subdivision requests are going to go to them before they come to the county. And they have, they're going to have to be signed off on by those small towns. So this was a good visual representation to show this is the two mile area in which these communities have corresponding jurisdictions in and you can kind of where the, these two mile buffers would connect somewhere in here. You would go to both of those communities to get approval from them if you were trying to do a subdivision in that area. The second thing that we did with the map here was we added in the yellow buffering around the urban fringe area. For each one of those communities, that's your rural residential area on there. And again, it's just kind of expand out some of the opportunities in those areas. But it would really coincide back to whether or not that's what each one of those communities wanted to happen in there. So there may be what I could foresee happening in that area is if it was outside of their urban fringe area, but a developer came in and wanted to do some sort of a subdivision, now we could be talking commercial, industrial, you could be talking housing at this point in time. Cause it's all just, we're thinking outside the box of what could potentially come in to one of these small towns or in the end of the county. And so the developer of that subdivision would go to that community and say that, hey, I want to be able to do this subdivision on just outside of your urban fringe area. So the community's thinking, well, I can't get to you. I can't annex you in right now. The community could then say, well, if you would sign this annexation agreement that runs with the ground, then we'll go ahead and we'll sign off on your subdivision request and it can go, it would come to the county then after that with their annexation agreements, all of those things would get recorded in and then that would say as the community grew out to it, that the whoever owned that land at that time, you're voluntary annexing it. Once the community gets to you and we can provide service to you, you're just going to annex it. So then that development could happen in that area. The city's not trying to stop it, county's not trying to stop it. It's just that way there's not a fight for when, the way these communities grow in Iowa. So those are my two key points that we wanted to make sure we got each one of those small towns represented in there. That way the county's not in their growth path. They have their own way that they can grow and work with the developers on and it's just a good visual representation of those areas there.
Matt, what does the pink represent?
That is your urban fringe area that they delineate.
Fringe.
Urban fringe. So the work that was done in the land use plan before I got involved in it was that urban fringe area would represent an area that the cities would hopefully immediately annex in. If a development was coming in that area, again, we're talking whether it's commercial, industrial, housing. If a subdivision of that nature was going to happen in that urban fringe area, you would want the community annexed at that time. But again, you're looking at these, some of these small community, that's a mile buffer around there. So is it realistic to think that if somebody's sitting out here three quarters of a mile and they come in the urban fringe and they go to the town and say, hey, I want to do the subdivision out there, that the community wouldn't just say, well, we're okay with it. So go ahead.
Is that many older you pointed out?
Silver City.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, Silver City.
Okay.
So, I mean, that was just it's really our representation of what it is. The city, the city council and that mayor are going to have their own designation on whether or not they sign off on that subdivision thing. But as far as what we would hope is, is that they would annex into the town at that point in time, but realizing that if you're three quarters of a mile out and small town can't get to it, more than likely they're going to allow it to happen. And hopefully we just kind of institute an annexation agreement with it and then once the town grew out that part, then they could just automatically annex it in the next time.
That's what my subdivision is. It's, I'm rural, but we're voluntary. So if and when the city decides to take us, we're voluntary. So.
Got it.
So then we get down to some questions that we had relating to our, the policy, the goals and policies. And we did do, I feel like we got a lot of good work done on these goals and policies because when we originally started out, especially when we get down to goal number four, we'll point out, I mean, when we came into this, we had ten policies written down there with a lot of them saying the same thing. And but we did have one that came up on goal one, policy number two, and that was here for require new major and minor residential subdivision developments to connect and be accessed by hard surface roads. And what we had started with that, the previous meeting, if you remember, was it just said residential development. And there was some good questions pointed out on, well, what exactly does residential development mean? Does it mean if I go to put up one house that that is now residential development, it has to be on hard surface road? And so I, I do think that that was a good point to clarify that is, we're talking about major or minor residential subdivision developments on that part of it and on hard surface roads. Our next major update that we had to this was goal four and the number of policies that we had within there. So, I think everybody remembers we originally had ten different policies within goal number four. And we weren't able to really go back and mine a lot of that, say a lot of the same things and turn some of that wording into just a little bit more positive language for the county, I think, which I mean, was starting out with number one, we're going to encourage development proposed within the urban fringe, infill development, rehabilitation of existing properties with the ability to annex into nearby cities and connect to cities, city water and sanitary sewer service. Goal, policy number two would be ensure that development near ecologically sensitive land uses uses thorough, I don't know what this, I guess we have to do a spell check on that one. Sensitive land. Sensitive land uses, yeah, sensitive land uses through the use of streams and wetland buffers and avoid development within the floodplain, which I think we all know after twenty eleven, twenty nineteen, we do have to start paying a little bit more attention to what we're doing down there in the floodplain. I do apologize, I get a little bit older and I need some readers. Policy number three, ensure that development uses and activities within the Les Hills do not negatively negatively impact this natural formation. I think it was important to say that because Mills County has a lot of infrastructure out there in the Les Hills and we want to be able to utilize that infrastructure and not say that, you know, it's just, it's that it's because they built it to a higher capacity than what it's being used at right now. So to, to put it in there that, that isn't negatively impacted, doesn't mean that, you know, the planning commissioner or the board is looking to shut those things down. It's just, we're looking at different development styles to go into that area, something that's going to be low impact and that kind of rides with the formations that are out there. Policy number four is maintain agriculture and open space as the dominant land use type and unincorporated in Mills County. Outside of the urban fringe and rural residential areas. Policy number five, reduce the potential conflicts between agricultural land uses and other land uses through buffering setbacks and or other creative strategies. And that was one of the ones that I, last time I made sure to really point out, I didn't, I don't think we wanted to really throw up there. I mean, it was pretty harsh. It was like that there was conflicts between agricultural land uses and every other land use. Being in Iowa, agricultural state, we really don't want to throw that out there to the public that we feel like there's this automatic conflict between those land uses. I think they can go in harmony a lot of times together. But we, at the same time, you know, we can do that. Our zoning doesn't apply to agricultural uses, but it does apply to other uses. So the zoning buffering and setbacks pieces, when we talk about that, that's going to be applied to the residential piece of it, not the agricultural piece of it. And then policy number six is to update the county zoning regulations to reflect the recommendations within the future land use plan and complete a comprehensive review and update to the corridor overlay district to ensure that the regulations meet the needs and goals of the policy. And I can say that just after, you know, my, my time that I've been here in Mills County, we've got two projects submitted into that corridor overlay district. That corridor overlay district is a challenge. There are so many rules and regulations through there with me. So I have had
Too many.
The conversations with the board members about, let's, how do we go back and look at that and understand that the adopted building codes that we already have in place really do help us mitigate a lot of what the corridor overlay district is trying to establish. But just to give an example of how this works is, is if somebody were to, if a project were to come in and submit for something to be built in the corridor overlay pro, or area. They have to call me two weeks ahead of time to let me know that they're going to come in and submit for this project. Once they submit for the project, I then have sixty days to look at that and try to compare it to the overlay district. Before then, I issue them any kind of changes and things that they may have to do to meet the standards within the corridor overlay district. And so then I would give it back to them with a list full of potential changes that they would have to go back, come back to me with. They would then have to take it, go through their review process or whatever they have and then return those plans back to me to start to review over again to make sure that we meet the recommendations that I put in there for the corridor overlay district. So if you have a commercial or an industrial developer who's coming in and looking at doing a project in Mills County, they don't want to see some timeline like that, thinking that my project's now going to get pushed out. At a minimum, you know, we're pushed out seventy-four days. There's a potential of us being pushed out over a hundred and twenty days before I can even break ground and get going on this project. And what they're finding now is, is on some of these, especially the commercial and industrial projects, if a county or not just county specific, but a jurisdiction comes back, it comes with them and has really strong language as far as their plantings and what their screening materials will look like. Some of the banks are backing out because they don't feel as though they're ever going to be able to meet those criteria. So it's limiting the financing opportunities that those, those style of builders have for those projects and.
So what do you recommend, Matt?
Well, that will come, once we get through this, we'll really, well, then we're going to dig into the heart of what's written in the code language for that corridor overlay district and try to really soften a lot of that back out and just knowing that what Mills County, a lot of what Mills County already has in their zoning ordinance. And a lot, and with the building codes that, that's taken care of and that we don't really need those real strict restrictions and with the buffering and setbacks and building positions, paving even in some areas, because a lot of what you're going to see get built down there, they can't have that amount of paving on there because they're going to be driving, you know, you could take John Deere, for example. John, John Deere wouldn't build down there if you had to have all that paving because they don't want to drive their track vehicles on the pavement. They need a gravel surface to be able to park those vehicles and drive them. And if they can't have that gravel surface, then they're not going to have their project there. Because it will, and so it takes, it takes a group like that out of the equation. And I would, I'd much, I would probably assume that that's a lot with if you got into a Caterpillar or some, anybody like that, or Case who's running big track vehicles, they don't want to be on that pavement surface. So you have to be able to give them some amount of, and not some, a large amount area that they can just gravel to park and or maneuver those vehicles on.
If they're looking at phasing their building into, they would have to tear the concrete out each time they would add on their building too. So it makes no sense.
So it becomes, and our, our concrete around here, I mean, we all, it's, it's not cheap. You can spend a million bucks in concrete real quick and that adds to their project costs and when they're looking at the full scope of what they're doing. So so I do think, and that, that, but that comprehensive review piece of it, right, would start once we, once we move this through and we get into, once we move it through the planning commission to the board of supervisors is where we're really going to dig into the heart of what those codes and ordinances do for us. So so that kind of, that's really, you know, this has been going on for a while now. So you got, you all have driven the ship. It's gone, it's gotten a long ways. Think we, like I said to you all, we have the heart of a good document here as far as what it's put together and I think that just with all of the public input, which I do applaud you guys for all the public input because to see, you know, you guys, I think you did meetings on both sides of the county. There's online opportunities. There's opportunities for people to come here and speak on it. And so now it's just really a matter of kind of decision time on how you all feel towards this document and what your recommendation would be with supervisors and I'd be happy to discuss. One thing I do want to mention in there is that Joe Martin was not able to attend. But he did send for that. He, he liked the document overall, but he would like to see goal one, policy two. His recommendation was is that to remove goal one, policy two from this document here. And at the heart of it, I don't necessarily see an issue removing that statement from this policy here. It is expressed in other policies and parts of the comprehences. So this, we are looking at, one of the things that I tried to say was, we are looking at one chapter So if you really want to dig into the secondary roads piece of it, there is a full another chapter on that part of it that is addressed to the county engineer and their processes. So it doesn't necessarily hurt anything taking it out of here. But that's, that would be up to the commission as a whole on that. I can stop talking.
Matt, in here, we're talking about is there public input tonight?
Again, like last time, that would be up to the commission to do that.
I don't, I don't see an issue with it. I, I mean, limit it to three to five minutes or three, whatever you guys want.
Like an army with three.
Then I think basically with your permission, Nick, that we just let them go for a second and we'll, we'll discuss what they, what some, some things that they're, and then, and then the board can talk again.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah. Yeah. Sure.
I know that we know most of you, but if you stand up and you can say your name for it, that would be great. So that way as we're doing the minutes, we can.
Care if I come up? Matt, I may be in your help. My name's Mark Hughes. I'm a local one of Red's after all my life and I've taken time to read the book and there's just a few items I'd like to point out. I hope I can get them with your three to five minutes, but I think I can't. I think the path of what we're all working on, all started with wind and solar. It's kind of opened up some of the different changes that we're currently working on. Some of the things that are related to the housing or the subdivisions or the projects. I'm not for sure what's been broken with a lot of them that would cause us to need to change some of the rules and regulations, but I want to kind of hit on a few things. And again, I did take the time, read through it. I got this from Matt. I just want to hit on a couple of things. It says this plan is for the next twenty-six years and is public input related to the future land uses. So I wasn't aware of the initial meetings that happened. It seemed like around twenty-one people, over fifteen thousand people in our county worked on it. Not for sure how it was advertised or how it got out to everybody, but I just, I wasn't aware at that time. So I wasn't able to get input at that time. So try to give a little bit now. So when you look through our county on the industry and everything we have, page four spells it out pretty well. Ninety-five percent of our county is agriculture. Building is around four percent. And the commercial and industrial is less than one percent. It's around six tenths of a percent. A big part of that is probably the space we have at the landfill. So with the housing and residential at four percent and second place for the agriculture, I just, you know, want to make sure that we continue to promote the home building and a little bit of developing. So I think it's a big part of our economy in the area. And you know, we're talking about limiting some things. On page six, it talks about how the floodplains, the lowest hills and the prime farm ground, we have limit the growth in our county. I think that's kind of an important thing. You know, you've got the floodplain, not a lot goes on down there. You got the lowest hills, not a lot goes down there through there just because of topography. And then, you know, some of the prime, prime farm ground. So it kind of limits the places you're able to build houses and do different projects. Matt, if you go to page eight, it kind of talks about the people that were involved with the survey and it's just pretty minimal, like the Glendale township only had three people. Center two, they're just huge areas with not a lot of involvement that put input into this. If you go to page nine.
Time's up.
No. Page nine. Says the most, five most important, important items. And on that there says, when asked to choose the five most important issues in the county, the most common response was housing availability and affordability. And if we limit where these projects can be, and in the book, it's kind of pushing us toward, towards only paved roads. It takes a lot of, away a lot of affordability on what people could buy for lots and build for houses. Okay? Matt, if you could go to page twenty-one, it talks about urban fringe. And I believe that's the pink area on the map. It says, these areas should remain in their current use with no further development or division until annexed or served by utilities or services. I think that's a big ask when you look at those urban fringes that they're required, and it says on page twenty-one to be served by municipal utilities and services. And, you know, you go north of town, we've got our water line runs all the way up to Lake Ohana. But other than that, we, we don't have a lot of real water in our area. Page twenty-one, it also talks about rural residential saying one to six dwelling units per acre with adequate public infrastructure. I think that's kind of a killer with the word adequate public infrastructure, which says you need paved roads, water service and wastewater collection treatment. So I believe that was yellow on the maps. Is that correct, Matt?
Yes.
So even though it's saying you can build houses, but it also says you need to have a paved road, you need to have water service, wastewater collection and treatment. I believe it kind of kills the right to build a build in those areas. Page twenty-three hits on the lowest hills protectionary, it says includes uses that will have little to no impact on the sensitive natural feature. I think if in the future with wording like that, you have a room full of people and somebody want to do a project, you'll have somebody standing in the room pounding on those words. And if it isn't explained a little better what that means, I think it could cause the person doing that project hardship to be able to get through it. I have one or two more things. Page twenty-seven. Goal one, and then Matt might just hit on this. Concerning that it says discourage single family rural subdivisions in areas that dwellings that will fall in the agricultural. So here's the mean. Right here. If a person's ever wanting to do a project, you're shut down pretty quick with the, with the wordage. When it says discouraged the single family. Page twenty-seven, policy two, a thing Matt just hit on. It says, require new major or minor residential subdivision developments to connect and be assessed by hard surface roads. I think you mentioned earlier that Joe Martin sent that in to.
I'm not going to come up there and say like, Mark that he was well prepared. I, I'd just like to probably continue on with a little bit of what he said. I mean, you guys have done a good job getting this stuff to this point. I think it's going to be important to make sure the end game is what we want. And I think that policy two is detrimental to the area. I think, you know, I think subdivisions off gravel are very important for the growth and affordable rural housing for people that want to be able to have horses or want to have you know, five, 10 acres or something like that. Developers aren't going to be able to develop something that's going to be inexpensive for somebody with paving and something in all areas. Some places it's going to be correct, some places it doesn't work. I also agree that, you know, going to that policy one, just looking at it real quick. If they're discouraging it in the Les Hills and they're discouraging it in the floodplains and they're discouraging it also in the ag area. I don't know where you're supposed to go. I reading that kind of right?
It's meant to be in the yellow. Whether that pink color is. You're staying away from the greens with that string.
Matt, go to that pink and yellow that we were talking about. There we go. Yeah.
So it's about to stay in the yellow, you said?
The rural, the residential development was meant to be in the pink and the yellow and stay away from the green. The light green was meant for your agricultural uses.
Pink, yellow and dark green is where you can build, dark green is where you can build subdivisions.
Pink, yellow and dark green.
Which, which is very comparable to how our zoning map is today. So there really hasn't been any changes there. Let's speak out.
We did have, and I want to be able to put this out to everybody. So and Jim's here, Jim's here tonight. He can operate comments he wants on this. So this area that we have right up here, we talked about that. He, he brought that up last time and it, and it was not changed in there by Confluence to add that into the blue area. And I think it was because there was some confusion on whether or not Jim had ever tried to get this portion up here rezoned before. And I did want to be able to show everybody this portion up here rezoned before. And I did want to be able to show everybody the ground that we're talking about on Beacon. And that is, so I'm zoning for everybody. Cause it is, I think the zoning got a bit off on their mapping whenever they originally did this. So you can see this, the less hills conservation area comes all the way down here. And this is the point that Jim was getting at when he was up speaking last time was there's your ridge line for the hills is back here. This is all flat ground up to that. And so he was advocating to have this piece here moved into that, uh, the blue shading on our map. And so for whatever reason, when they did the blue shading on here, they, I mean, it's just odd that the road, it's actually where the green line is. That's where your L thirty-one cuts up and goes north. And they put everything on that side of it in the less hills district, which is flat bottom there. And, um, this almost reminds me of like a part where they didn't zoom their maps in close enough to actually see where the contour of things change out. It's almost like an older version of mapping capabilities that didn't happen before. And then they, they put that blue area all the way back in here and just completely left out an area that could be, uh, a part of that blue.
Which means that's business residential is the blue?
Uh, business park industrial.
Business park.
But again, it doesn't change the zoning that it is right now. It just that if, if they were to come in with a proposal for it, it's one last step that a person has to take. You can come in with a proposal for it right now and say, hey, I want to do this here. And but when in, instead of just coming in for a rezoning, you're going to come in and you're going to do a future land use map change. Then you're going to come in for a rezoning and go before, and so it's just another, it's an added step to the process that's there. That while you're doing things like this and you're updating your future land use map, you can update those things now to save those steps. Because I mean, it's pretty obvious when you zoom into the area and you see the developments happening down there, um, what could be, so.
Basically where John Dean lives right there, where the western store sign and stuff on that corner right there, that's less hills. So the flat part, I mean, it's got pavement on four slip, you know, crossroads paving there. And we've got that corner, that whole area is less hills from highway thirty-four to the north and from a hundred ninety-fifth to the east is all less hills. So I, I guess it should be a commercial area. You would assume it had been a commercial area at one time. It's not less hills. It's reserve bottom. So.
Really? I think it came down to mapping capabilities at the time that they just squared it off instead of following. I mean, now you can really be, you know, our capabilities have grown so much. You can zoom in and follow those contours down and, and mark out each parcel as it goes. Uh, where previous to this, you know, nobody really had that capability. So you saw a lot of blocked off maps like that. I just said, hey, this is it.
I would say it's probably the only interchange in the area that shows that it's less hills right there. It's just.
So Alan, are you saying that, uh, where John Dean did live, that should be in the flood plain?
Should be in the business.
And then where Doug Roll lives, that starts the lost hills?
Yeah.
Down to the Bintons?
Yes. Yeah.
East of the road.
Hmm.
East.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just the hills though, not the road.
Right. Okay.
The bottom ground.
Yeah, the bottom ground.
On the east side of the pavement, you know, when it gets to the less hills, it's the less hills. We understand that part.
Right.
Is there anybody else have any comment?
I have one question. I apologize because I realized thirty minutes after the last meeting that I had missed. Um, I really wish I had been here for, because it sounded like you guys had a lot of great comments going on. My only question and concern around the expansion from where it had gotten diminished, right? From current land use to the original draft of this. And now this is back out closer to what it is now in terms of rural residential is how do we as a community and as a county feel we can adequately, can, do we feel like we can adequately support that amount of territory with all of our emergency services? That are available. Does our tax base allow us to provide the amount of necessary services to those people?
Once we start paying them, yes. Right now the volunteers are struggling, but it's not far away.
That's, that's part of our plan is to provide for that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's going to be state mandated.
Yep, we're going to have.
Emergency services.
Oh, so I just, I mean, cause I'm thinking about in terms of the layout where the, where the social dispatch from today, right? That's a stretch to go.
Right. You can't get from A to B in seven minutes. So you've got to use, utilize our stations, what we have.
Right.
But pay them twenty-four seven.
Got it.
Yeah.
It's coming.
It's coming.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
It's pretty serious.
Yeah. I can totally understand that.
Yeah.
So Matt, to change something that we have in the draft right now, does it take a motion or does it take, explain what we can go from here?
You can make it in your motion, in your motions for, in your motion for it. Um, you can say that, you know, we, we approve of moving this or a recommendation of the board supervisors would be to approve this draft with the following modifications. And then list out your modifications.
There was, there was, uh, a little bit, um, I guess I'll go here for a little bit. If everybody's ready. Okay. Um, maybe potentially a little bit different definition. On page. On page here. I just, I just didn't love, I didn't love her definition of the rural residential. You know, I think that's something to talk about for a little bit. And then also our definition of the less hills protection area. I'm on page, I'm going to go to page twenty-three. Where it says, uh, development within the area should be limited and only include is uses that will have little to no impact on this sensitive natural feature. I just think, you know, ever, nobody wants to take our, 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 our farmland that's, you know, but I think people want to live in the less hills. And I think we need to encourage people to live in the less hills. I think it's our poorest ground in our county, but maybe the most beautiful. And I think the way, if there was a way, Matt, to word that to where, you know, the con, with the contours or with the, you know, I just don't know if I love that definition of, it's almost like, we just don't know if we really want you there or not.
Yeah, I was thinking about, it's, it's been hard to kind of go back through some of these because I am one of them people where like words matter, right? And when I first, when I originally read through it, I was just like, man, there is a whole lot of discourages and things like that. And you want this to be almost like a sales pitch to the county. You know, what's our, what's our goals, our, our heart say about for Potawatomi County? So, um,
But you don't want to ruin it.
And, and no.
So if there's some way Alan, they can, I don't know.
I don't think the words, it covers. I mean, it's a broad brush. There's no doubt, but.
It says, we have little to no impacts on this sensitive area. I mean, if you put a road through it, you're going to have some impact. I mean, when we're saying little to no impact, somebody could come to this and say, I mean, I think it's, I mean, it's the most desired area where people want to be. And I don't know any developer that goes in there and moves a million yards of dirt to try to make it toward this is going to be pretty. I mean, they're going to roll with the, roll with the contours. Yeah, we, with the grading, grading plans. And we also have something, we also have load protection in it right now, because it's limited to a three acre parcel if it hasn't been defarmed before. That's a rule that's in place today. But if there was a way, there was a way to maybe soften the tone of that. Well, we encourage, we encourage development in the less hills the proper way. And Lynn, you want them to, you want them to.
I like what it says.
Like how it reads. Yeah.
Thank you. But I very much appreciate that. So.
But it says, I mean, should be limited, limited and only include little to no impact. I mean, um, western hills, for example, that's in the less hills. Do we, was that impacted a lot or was that little to no impact when that happened? We love that subdivision where it lays north of Glenwood on the ridge. I just think if you, you know, if you, if you, I, I mean, I would encourage on the ridges, you know, not in the canyons, that type of stuff. But and, and maybe I'm talking about something that, that sounds great and everybody loves it, but.
But Alan, that's what people want. They want to be the candidates.
Yeah. 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 That's true. No win.
Alan, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Can you guys tell me what you think? In terms of the little to no change, little to no to just read manageable or managed impact. So you include uses that will have managed impact because that says we as a county want to manage
Right.
how it impacts our very protected area.
I like the sound of that.
Matt, what do you think?
Well, I had written, I had written that because I had read through that part of it. And I think it was kind of that little to no and the limited pieces of it that were kind of triggering off on that. So what I had kind of sketched out on there was that development within this area should be with low impact design criteria to the sensitive natural, for natural feature. So that's just, I mean, it's, it's really the same. It says a lot, it's saying the same thing, but you're, you're just taking out the limiteds and you're taking out the
No.
the zoe out of that piece of it to just say that, you know, we're, you're going to come in, you're going to have a low impact design. You're going to, so if you had a forty acre chunk of ground in the farm, I know, flat farm field, and you came in with your subdivision design and it's got your road run up the center of it and it tees off of it. And uh, you got your lots all divided up for it. Uh, that's, that would be the criteria that would be on that side of it. If you came in and you had that same forty acre chunk of ground, but it's in the less hills. And at that point in time, then when you come in, you're going to have to come in with your topos all printed out. You're going to have to show us how the ridges run right now. What's the potential that you're going to, what even on your, you know, like on your home sites, what are you clear, what is, what's going to be dug out for the home site? How many trees are you leaving in place? If you're taking out trees, are you going to put some other trees back in it? You know, there's, there's that, it's like that higher level of criteria that's going to go into that design piece of it to show that I'm not changing where the stormwater runs right now. Uh, it's, it's that, that part that
Erosion.
be made, made clear to.
Can, can you read again, Matt, what you said there?
I said, development within this area should be with low impact design criteria to the sensitive natural feature.
So he took out the limited and only include uses.
Low impact design criteria to the sensitive natural feature. I don't like you can list out what that criteria is, right? I mean, it's because this forty acres of less hills is not the, the same as the other. You're not going to find a base set of criteria that's going to apply to each one of these areas. It'll be different.
Should feature be formation?
It could be.
Geologically speaking.
Yeah.
It could be.
Because that also.
Sensitive natural formation.
Handles what you're talking about.
Yeah. I was trying to, they had feature in there. So I was trying to keep it in there, but it kind, it was going from low impact design features to sensitive feature. I'm like, it's too many features in there. So.
Formation.
No, I just said managed.
Yes, and managed.
But his, what he's saying basically says the same thing.
I think that sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah. Another thing too here, um, where we're talking about, this is page twenty-one, a little residential. And this is, this is where maybe my definition of this may sound a little different than, but of course rural residential, I think we're talking about our ag residential area or less hills area or urban fringe area. Um, it talks about the rural residential category is for traditional low density, single family houses with lot sizes ranging from one to six dwellings unit per acre. So.
With adequate infrastructure.
Adequate. So basically is this, is this talking about if that area gets annexed, then you could do one to six dwellings per unit per acre? Cause you know, forever we've been two acre minimum per single family dwelling. And now we're talking potentially you could put six dwellings per unit, which
Right.
would get a little tight, maybe, maybe, maybe not. I don't know if there's a better way of using, of, of going through that potentially.
It's a dwelling unit. What would you describe a dwelling unit?
Six doors.
Six doors.
Doors.
So we're not talking like townhomes or?
It could be.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a lot. That's dense for rural, but for a county to handle.
Sprint it out.
I mean, uh, you, I don't think you would want anything near that. That's, you know, rural. I mean, so it had to be in that, you know.
Should we just strike the numbers completely out of it?
Well, I think you need to strike the dwelling units per acre.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, cause I, I think I could see that you could have lot sizes ranging from one to, and I, I would go from one, you could say.
Lake Ohana, isn't it one unit per acre?
Okay. Cause I mean, if you have water, you could even do one acre lots. And, um,
This, this is on the other side of it. I mean, we've been trying to add now that now we're over the word potentially on this, on this part.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, this gets really dense in there.
I don't want six, six hundred per acre.
Definitely wouldn't be enough water.
It starts off good. Category is traditional, low density, single family houses with lot sizes ranging from, um, and you could really go from one to whatever. Acres from lot sizes ranging from one to six acres.
Yeah. No.
Yeah.
I don't remember ever seeing that language in there before.
I just say one to six acres.
I don't either.
They're talking about lot sizes and then they go with dwelling units per acre.
I think the dwelling units per snuck in there somehow and it wasn't there before. As we read it without it, it makes sense.
I just think nobody really.
You don't want, you don't want six houses per acre.
No.
Absolutely.
How would we change that, Ronnie? Ranging from one to?
One, one to six acres.
One to six acres.
Take the dwelling units per.
Right.
Well, what if we, what if we put, what if we put the rural residential category is the traditional low density, single family dwellings period? And it says for perfect, for the purposes of this category, we talk about all the infrastructure. And then we could write at the end of it, density shower and treats. So then, you know, if you have your infrastructure, you could make it more dense, but not really give us a size. Or how many, how many.
Just leave the numbers out is what you're saying?
I think, I, I like where you're going with it, but I would probably leave that density piece off of it.
Yeah.
And just cut it down to that.
Just basically the first two lines?
Yeah, so if you go, the rural residential category is for traditional, low density, single family houses, period. For the purpose of this category, adequate public infrastructure includes paved roadways, water service and means for wastewater collection treatment. Developments within this category may also include religious, educational, institutional uses. Child daycare centers and public and private recreation.
Yeah, just take out the with lot sizes ranging from one to six, da, 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 just take that part out, scratch it.
Yeah, because if you're in an area that has anyone, you, you need to really limit it down to any one of those. Utility services, you're gonna see a lot more depth, a lot, a lot of density in those areas. So a lot of those areas don't have any of those services. And so at those point in times, it's not like you're not gonna have those, you're gonna have those two acre lots up there.
Yeah.
I go in and.
So would you leave out the single family houses with lot sizes?
Right, stop after single family houses, so stop after. Take back up again for the purposes of this category.
Did you lost your tie into that definition?
You're right.
If you take the tail end of that first sentence off, you lose the, the relationship back to why you're defining adequate public infrastructure. So do you leave that last part? So you strip out from with lot sizes to, um, in areas with, right? So you say, single family houses with adequate public infrastructure, period, and then you go into your definition? Cause otherwise you're, you're defining public, the adequate public infrastructure, but there's no reference for it.
True. But in areas with. Adequate public infrastructure.
Single family houses get to with adequate public infrastructure.
You're basically taking off the lot sizes ranging from one to six dwelling units per acre.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Since being in the less hills is Woodfield, the only subdivision that would be similar to that, whether we're talking about right now.
With water sewer.
Water sewer works less than a half an acre per lot. Right?
Yeah.
But with a lot of common, there's a lot of common air that's kind of owned by, you can call it half acre, but you can use the whole subdivision.
Some of those lots out in Woodfield are a quarter acre.
Matt, can I throw, or Nick, Matt, Nick, can I throw out a, um, a motion to kind of start chewing on here? Or are we ready for that?
Do we have other things to modify?
Anybody have anything else you wanna throw in?
What? Did we wanna talk about the pavement?
Yeah, that was.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, I guess I'm, I'm done for now unless some, somebody else says something.
We can't hear them. Yeah, I heard that, I just can't hear what they're saying.
Now, now what about the goal one policy two that Matt talked about getting rid of that?
That'll be part of the motion, yeah.
So, I guess I don't know if I, I don't know if I can give the motion to change dad's land to commercial. I guess that's potentially somebody else was.
I don't think you can.
Would need to do that. So I'd hope somebody could do that.
Yep.
I will go with this motion here. I'm gonna motion that we change the less hills definition on page, uh, whatever twenty one, I believe that was, page, page. Twenty three, with, with the verbiage that you, you talked about, Matt. Okay, is that enough information for you?
It is, yes.
Okay, and my motion would also be, uh, changing the definition of the rural residential on page twenty one that we discussed as a group. And I would also strike out with my motion, uh, goal number. Goal number one, uh, policy number two that Mr. Martin put in email to us.
And, and policy number two. Goal two is policy two.
Is that about the paved road?
Goal one, policy two, just strike about the pavement.
Okay.
And again, with my motion, I, I do think there's, like you talked about, there's other layers. But this doesn't probably need to be in this like. So that is my motion for now.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, uh, we will go ahead and take a vote on this motion. Martin, Addison, Kirsten. Jameson, yay, Hughes.
Yay.
Right?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
If you don't mind, Alan, in terms of your map adjustment?
Yeah.
The, the one thing that Shire's pointed out several times is something I, I mean, it's obviously something you guys as a board have to look at, but you can amend your map whenever you need to. You don't have, just because it's this way today, in six months, if you're like, oh, we missed this, you can amend your map. No, I'm, I get fixing it now, I'm saying, make sure you guys understand. Anytime you need to make an adjustment to that app because you've realized that something has changed.
Right.
You guys have that ability, anytime, it's not like you have to go all the way back through the process to do that.
Matt, can you pull back up the beacon, the beacon sheet? I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
That's come up before though, and it's as easy as it can be, it's not.
I'm saying that they have the ability to do it, I'm not saying it's easy to do it, I'm just saying they have the ability.
This map does not follow the legal description for the overlay district anyway. There's also several errors on the existing one, a little on the.
So this, this is a portion of that map, but we're talking about two like, it was just because of the mapping capabilities at the time that this bridge line really didn't get followed down here because. Going on here with that paved roads, you have the stability to. Here's our land use map, that was one point that got brought up. When you look at. The land use map is a little bit deceiving at this point. That's when you pull up that future land use map.
It's hard to see it.
Zoom it one more time, it might do that.
But. So when you're looking at this and you see hundred ninety fifth street down here, it almost makes you follow the track. That's right, this is, this, that's railroad that's there, hundred ninety fifth street runs straight up here. It's just the way they kind of labeled it right down here at that intersection crossing of it. Makes it a little bit deceiving because you think, well, it is included in there, but that pavement's way over here and that's the ground that more than likely has the ability to develop out.
So I would like to make a, a motion to change that to, from the less hills to the business park industrial. To follow the bridge line. Base of lots of ridge line.
I, can I see exactly how much that is, like, I know we can't draw it.
It's the bottom ground.
Yeah, it's, it's.
So there's your thirty four intersection with a hundred and ninety second street.
Okay.
Right here's.
Short on the beacon two, the beacon picture also.
Um, she wants to know, uh, what, what is, what are we looking at? Changing, I guess, on that match is what she's trying to understand.
So that corner of bottom ground is currently in the less hills.
That area that.
But it's right there, bottom ground.
That little square right there.
That white green one there?
It, no, it goes into the dark green area.
Oh, I see.
In the bottom ground, so it's, it's almost. It would be extending that piece, this is all, right here is where that ridge line actually, you know, kind of runs back over here. This is all still your bottom ground, it's not real, this is, even though it's marked less hills on here, this is obviously not less hills ground. This is flat ground down here, so it's these pieces here that we're talking about moving in. Could be, if these are already commercial uses going on, then there's no harm in changing those into the blue as well.
So we're looking at changing it to a commercial.
The business park.
This is park industrial.
So bring, we have a motion.
I have a motion up there.
Do we have a second?
I did, can I hear your motion again, so it's changing?
We're correcting it, the bottom ground that is currently.
To business.
To, yeah, to business park industrial from less hill.
So that is my family, that's right in there, and I guarantee you, we'll never change ag residential. It will always be ag ground, not business.
Okay.
So I don't know if we wanna. Right there, that spot, right on one ninety fifth.
One of these.
Well.
That's your farm, it's west of hundred eighty fifth.
They're up here, right? Aren't they over here?
Is that one ninety fifth, that road there?
Yeah, this is hundred ninety fifth street.
Right.
Light green to dark green is a hundred and ninety.
You're in the left, they actually have that marked out as a less hills, right?
But we were talking about changing right there on the corner.
Yeah. This piece here. I think this piece.
All of the old river bottom ground is what it would be, no hills, no hills at all.
I think your grounds always, you're, you're on the west side of hundred ninety fifth street, right?
So we're in the light.
You're already commercial.
Yeah. You'd just be extending it across the street, but not the hills.
The black line is just a.
That's the city, it's the city two mile area.
Do you recommend that, Matt? Do you think that's a good suggestion?
Yeah, I do, I think that is just kind of the, I, I believe it's only put this way because of the, the mapping capabilities. Like they didn't zoom in to see that the hillside was going down there, you have, so it's like an investment in infrastructure, right? County is already invested in, has, has had an investment in the infrastructure of a paved road going out that way. They have that whole giant overlay district of what this area is gonna build out into, and I mean, there has always been some commercial that's gone on down over in here. And up further, you know, you have commercial areas up in there further. I think that this area, from what you see coming, coming down from the north to us. This whole road's gonna continue to build out in, in industrial fashion at some point in time. This is the, the next logical area where they're all gonna go.
The city's looking at putting water out there right now.
I mean, hundred ninety second street just north of there is just, is, so that's Google Echo, everybody, I mean, it's gonna continue to just travel right down that road. They like that corridor for some reason, it gives them interstate view that they can feel safe that they're next to the interstate. And I've talked to a number of the, the people that do those industrial parks and things like that, and you can't convince them to go north of Council Plus. They feel like everything, their whole goal is to just keep going south and building those out. And it's given places for, the nice thing about that is, is that as the communities get a little bit harder on the small businesses. It's giving them a place to go, so it gives your plumbers, your electricians, uh, places like that to go have a one acre lot that they can put up a building on. They can park all their vans and equipment at, and that their employees can show up there to go get everything and leave out versus coming into your neighborhood. Parking their cars and taking their work van and go out from there, those are usually like the conflicts that we come up against, right? When you start having a bunch of housing and things going in is that, you know, your plumbers and your electricians, your HVAC guys, they, they built that. They build themselves a nice big shop and they're thinking, hey, I'm just gonna have my guys come out here, while the neighbors start calling and complaining. And you're like, well, you're not zoned to have that business out there, you gotta move it to a certain spot, so it's kind of, and we have provisions written in. Where it's almost like an incubator for the small business person, right? And it's like, once you reach a certain level, now it's time for you to move to one of these places to where you can go put a building and have a shop up. And your employees can report out there versus reporting to your house. And it usually goes with like the number of acres that you have, you know, if you have one to, uh, if you have two acres, you know, you can have one employee. If you have up to five acres, you can, you have three employees that show up out there. But then after that, and, and that's what you hope for, I mean, you want it to keep growing, and after that, it's like, okay, now it's time for you to move to a shop and get out of the neighborhood and. Have a place for outdoor storage, have a place to park your things that's lit, secured.
And they pay taxes.
And they pay taxes, yep.
You got a motion? You have a second? Hold on a second, you have a second by Larson. Uh, Larson, yay, Keller. Kristen.
Yay.
Jameson, yay, Hughes. Right?
Yeah.
The other thing, the other thing on urban fringe, and Matt, we'll take your, take your, you here too, or listen to what you're saying here. Are we concerned about where, an urban fringe where it talks about, uh, uh, no further development or division until annexed and served by municipal utility services?
Not really.
Does that scare you or that, that is?
No, the towns, the towns are gonna control it, right? So the county, uh, if the county comes in and says, uh, you know, if, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I wanna sub, subdivide this land about here. The only thing that the county should tell them is go talk to the ci, go talk to the city. And the city's gonna have, uh, their rights on whether or not anything within that two miles gets divided up. And you should get their annexation agreements in place with them at that time. And then if the, if the city comes back and, and they're okay with it, and here's our annexation agreement to it, then the county should wanna be involved just to make sure. Okay, you know, are the, how are the roads gonna be and, um, hopefully it just gets annexed in at the same time, but.
Probably what's has to happen, what has to happen right now, I mean, if you're within two miles of the city, you're probably dealing with the city anyways. Is that, is there a twenty eighty agreement within two miles of this? So you're probably already dealing with that potentially.
The first mile, the first mile, they, they, uh, sign off, or they sign, we sign off, second mile, we sign, they sign off. That's the agreement we have.
Okay.
And it works pretty good.
Yeah.
So that's.
Silver City just did it here recently.
So that's kind of covered already, potentially, okay.
Anybody have anything else?
Um, I guess, I guess with the changes. I have a motion to, uh.
Can I ask a question real quick, before you, my final motion.
It'd be next, sure.
Page twenty one on rural residential. Pull that up, or, you know, show the yellow map if you don't mind, please.
I can't see what they're.
Everything in the yellow there, the way I understand, you guys allowed something to happen that is on paved road. But in, in the yellow where we say we can build, it says on page twenty-one that it includes paved roads, water service, and means for wastewater collection and treatment. Understand it, if you don't have the water service, or you don't have the wastewater, you can't do a project there.
No, we changed the wording of that. I didn't write, I don't have the exact thing written down. I'm gonna go back through the recording and, and see what that says on there. It's just defining out, as you get adequate services in that area, you're gonna be able to go to a denser lot size, right?
Okay, I missed that then.
Yeah, so as, if you come upon an area that's in that rural residential piece of it, you got water service there. And then you're gonna know, hey, I can go to that one acre lot. If you're in an area that does not have that, well, there, then you know you're back out to your two acre lot or, or larger.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Anybody have any other business? If anyone discussed?
Matt, before I make this big motion, um, is there anything you feel that, that we should discuss, or you feel like we've, looked on this plan enough to turn, cause once this, if this motion gets approved, then it turns, it goes over to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors has potentially one to three public hearings on it, correct?
That's when my, that's when my epiphras really starts at that point in time, right? Cause that's when, that's when we're pulling up codes and going back through those and working on that corridor or overlay district and stuff like that. I compliment you all on the amount of work and, uh, I know it doesn't seem like much public input. But I, I, I work in Potawatomi County, uh, redid our land use comp plan. I have one person show up. It was these, and that was out of a number of public hearings that was held. And that one person was, uh, Hill Billy, he wouldn't even mind me calling him Hill Billy. Came out of the hills, and it was probably the only time he came out of the hills in the last year, just because he wanted to have his say on the land use comp plan.
So, so is the, is the overlay district gonna be part of this, or will this, are they an apple and a potato?
You're, you're, I don't think you're gonna get rid of your, your name of the overlay district.
I don't think we have any desire to get rid of it. It's just to loosen it up, because it, like you said, Matt, you know, you, you deal with developers looking. I deal with developers that build and, you know, I'm doing the projects for them. And the ones that I've talked with, they refer to that as a no-build zone. And it's just because of how strict it is. And thank you for saying that. Thank you, question.
So I, I mean, you all, you're gonna have that corridor overlay district out there.
Yes, and we, and we wanna keep.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a nice to find out area.
Yeah.
Um, it's just gonna be, we just have to go back through those. Once this gets done, that'll, that allows us to go back through those ordinances. And say, okay, what are the parts that we need, that we have learned through all of our public?
Soften it up a little bit.
Perfect.
And, and we know now, as developers have approached us, that, cause how long's the corridor overlay district been in place?
Yeah, nine, eleven.
So you've had some time with it out there, and that's what you need to do.
I started, I started in twelve.
Well, it was somewhere.
I mean, it's all on the right path.
Yeah, yeah. After zoning.
Okay, I will motion to move this on to the Board of Supervisors, the Future Land Use Plan, uh, draft of April two thousand twenty-four with the changes that we, uh, motioned here in today's meeting.
Make it a motion to approve it with the, with the law applications.
Yep, correct.
Votes, Morrison, yay, Keller, Kristen, Jameson, yay, Hughes.
Yes.
Pryd.
Yeah.
Look, commission tonight, but it's just a good reminder of, for those of you who signed up for the ISU extension class, next week, next Thursday. All there? I'll be there.
I haven't had Bobbers food for years.
We have a motion here to move. We have a second. Second, motion adjourned.